She can keep working on it or whatever at this point.
Okay.
Okay, thanks. Alright, so it's now 7:13 PM and we will start our meeting. We'll do roll call.
Rob Karuth. Derek Gurkant. Nancy Hopper. Terry Lapp.
Here.
John Proudie. Todd Schneider. Todd Schneider, are you there? Do we know what happened to Todd?
So I can see him. Is he not able to hear either?
I heard him before.
Yeah, I could hear him earlier too, but and I can see him looking at the screen, but I don't know.
Who's got a chalkboard?
Todd Schneider.
Did maybe he did he type in the chat?
Todd, do you need to unmute?
It says he's unmuted, so he can hear us, but for here, just do a thumbs up then, Todd.
I'm not going to be able to see, so somebody's gonna have to tell me. Is Todd Schneider doing a thumbs up here?
Now he's leaving.
All participants are unmuted. And everybody has control of their if they can mute or if they can mute themselves or unmute.
Yep.
Okay, well, let's just go on at this point, because we have enough to continue on if Nancy and Todd can't get theirs to work.
Okay, but do I do a present for them so their picture is here?
Well, okay, so Todd, can you hear me? Thumbs up or no?
What is going on? There's too many people.
So I don't even know that he can hear me at this point.
Okay, if we tell everybody to hide your video, stop your video, to see if that will help?
I just I just sent him a text message, but he's not responding.
Okay, how about if we we have everybody move video except the board members?
Video, okay.
It's in your left corner. I think that Todd just left. He's maybe trying to reconnect.
Okay.
Do you want me to finish roll call?
Um. Sure, and then we'll all just kind of check in with them periodically, and if they're if they come in, then they can say, yeah, I'm here, something to that effect, and we can just add them on.
Okay.
Okay.
Melissa's here. All right, we are done with that.
Very good, thank you. Okay, so now we will move on to the any agenda changes and approval of the oh, nope, I'm sorry. We will move on to the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag. To the republic.
To the republic. One nation. Under God.
Individual. Liberty and justice for all. Okay, Todd, can you hear me? Okay, we'll move on to the any agenda changes and approval of the agenda.
I move to approve as presented.
Can anyone hear me?
Yes, we can.
No, we can't.
Can you hear us? We can try making a new meeting and starting from a new meeting if you'd like. A new Zoom meeting.
They need to.
I can hear him now. Hey Nancy. I got you now. Let's adjust. So can all the board members hear?
Yes.
Can all the board members speak?
I can.
I think it's everybody except for Todd, because everybody was okay before, and now Todd's the only one that can't because Nancy's in. So. He's having the same issue now, whatever she had, so if we.
Todd, if you can select the arrow next to the microphone and look and see what your microphone is listed as, it may be selecting something else.
He what?
I don't even know that Todd is even is he still in here? I don't even see him still connected at all.
I don't see him either.
So let's just keep going. If he gets back in, then we'll go from there.
Okay.
So this is John. I'm going to second Rob's motion to approve the agenda.
Okay, yeah, and if everybody would please state your name as you make a motion and or second, please, that will help us out. Thank you. So we have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Okay, roll call.
Rob Karuth. Derek Gurkant.
Alright.
Nancy Hopper.
Aye.
Terry Lapp.
Aye.
John Proudie.
Aye.
Todd Schneider. Melissa Smith, aye.
Okay, now we will move on to public comment. I'm not aware of anybody in the audience that wanted to comment, or if there is anybody, or Bev, do you know of any?
I'm not aware of anyone who wanted to make comments.
Okay, I don't hear of anybody speak up, so we'll go ahead and move on to our reports section. Is there any reports from the board? Okay, we'll move on to the superintendent, Dr. Hammack.
So can everybody hear me okay?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Yeah.
So I've got three items under my superintendent's report at this time. And I'm gonna go and and just a little, I'm gonna go a little bit out of order here. First of all, I want to start with the update on update on current update on activities and athletics, item three. I spoke with Mr. Chisholm at the high school again this morning. Harrison and I have been in contact about a about where Colorado High School Association of Chesa, where Chesa is in terms of activities for high school sports for this summer and then leading into fall. And right now, Chesa has a prohibition on any activities up till June the first. Mr. Chisholm is scheduled to be on a on a on a panel this Thursday regarding potential impacts to fall sports. He noted to me this morning as well that Jefferson County Schools, which has about 80,000 students, has closed all their athletic facilities, all their all their outdoor athletic facilities up until the beginning of August, so they're not they're not planning on coaches holding any camps or anything like that through August. Our most recent information from city of Fort Morgan, I I serve on Community Forts, we meet on a monthly basis, and I'm also on the consortium, the Economic Development Consortium, Consortium for Morgan County. And Kristin Basil, who is the head of those, head of both those organizations, has noted there's a 14-day period before any of those facilities could open up, and I think as we're all aware, Morgan County is is really challenged at this time with an upward trend with Corona or COVID-19 coronavirus issues. So again, right now, we just don't know about where where student activities and athletics may be for this summer. Right now, we're, you know, obviously, we're in we're in a no-contact pattern or a no-in-person pattern. And for the foreseeable future, Mr. Chisholm and I believe that that's where we will remain. Any questions? Any any questions from any board members?
Not me.
No, that's what I've read, yeah.
No, none here.
Okay, so the second update I have for you then is on the high school graduation. I think you saw that Mr. Good submitted information on a survey that the high school students had completed for graduation. Just kind of just coincidentally, Colorado Department of Education at 4:30 this afternoon, CDE released new information on graduation ceremony guidance. And they are saying the gatherings of more than 10 people are not permitted. Vulnerable people at high risk of severe illness from COVID-19 must remain at home. All participants in any sort of graduation ceremony would need to be screened for fever and symptoms before entering. They are they are noting that some they are talking about alternative ideas to graduation districts are hosting virtual graduation ceremonies. Video recordings of a live ceremony involving fewer than 10 graduates could be broadcast on a local public access television. Small communities are playing car parades. They're noting driving graduation.
I should be on.
Nice thought.
Okay, I'll just stay on the phone, and if you see me waving and screaming, that means I've lost my mind.
Yeah.
Thank you.
They said very small communities with only a few graduates may be able to hold ceremonies on football fields or other outside locations. And I think you know, I think you're you're I know you're able to see from the information that Mr. Good provided that obviously our our graduation challenges are are very, very different than our neighbors. We graduate plus 200 students. The high school did put out a survey for a an August 1 graduation. They had had almost 200 responses. Approximately 60% are preferring to wait for some sort of alternative ceremony on August 1, or even wait until October to have a traditional ceremony. Eric is noting, or excuse me, Mr. Good is noting, there are particular challenges to that. Eric, are you on are you on the line right now? Are you on the meeting line right now? I wasn't sure. I guess he's not right now, but but I think that is a particular.
Sorry, I'm here. I just couldn't unmute.
Yeah. Okay, so I Eric, any additional then in terms of where we stand right now?
No, not really. Both of the surveys are still open. It really hasn't changed very much in terms of more more people seem to be preferring the idea of having a traditionals, a traditional ceremony at some point. I think my concern about that is it's pretty clear from everything that I've heard that it's going to come back, that we're gonna we're gonna end up with an outbreak again, and I don't know when that is, and I would hate for us to postpone until October or November or December and then have to postpone it again because it comes back. And the same thing could happen, I suppose, in August. It's just so hard to know. It's so hard to predict right now what's going to work best. But I does feel like the summer might be better. We might be better off than the fall or the winter.
But so Eric, so right now, we're looking at a. Right, so right now, we're looking at an August 1 date based on this most recent survey. Is that accurate?
Well, that's actually not what the people have chosen. I think I'm I'm just concerned after having done some more digging, I assumed they were gonna choose the August date, but.
I was reading here.
Yeah, no, they they're choosing to wait.
Oh, okay, okay.
That is that is their preference.
Okay, I thought at that last paragraph that I was reading that we're planning on that August 1 date still, but we're.
That's that is still my recommendation. Based on the other conversations that I've had, but I did want to have a sense of what the community was looking for to be part of the conversation, so.
So, you know, so with that information, Board of Education members comments, questions for Mr. Good and or myself?
I I don't have, I guess my concern is I'd rather have it in August rather than postpone it until October, because I would assume if we're gonna have another flare up, I would from what they're talking about, it would be in the fall, moving into winter, but I mean, I guess I'd rather schedule something and then cancel it and move it again, but that's not a viable either, I guess. I don't know.
Would be that that we maybe think about a long weekend or, you know, sometime when people are gonna down because having an out-of-state college student try to come back for graduate.
That's true.
It just seems like if we're limited choices, I don't understand, or I don't, I'm not sure that either date can realistically be planned. I mean, I don't know what this will do, and I agree with good, it seems certain the second wave will come at some point. I mean, is there no option for a virtual meeting? Did the parents respond to that in the survey? Was that passed or?
So I was mostly trying to get a sense of whether they wanted to try to do something non-traditional now or wait until we could do something traditional. I was concerned that if I gave them too many options, that the vote was going to be so split, it was going to be hard to know what they actually wanted. I got a lot of feedback back with suggestions. It actually feels to me like they don't want it to be computer-based, whatever we do, that there seemed to be a lot of pushback on the idea of it being virtual, but I there's they were more accepting about the idea of it being like a parade or or a lot of people think we should just try to space them all out on the football field, which I just think is not viable for us. We're too big, but.
How many graduating seniors will we have?
It'll be about 200. I mean, that's bigger than the the whole graduation is going to be at some of these other places. And that's just the seniors.
So I guess my question would be when we're waiting till later in the summer, I I guess, is it even an option at all, or it's still completely unknown as to if it's going to be any sort of live ceremony? Is that, am I correct in that?
I thought August, if we had it in August, it would be a live ceremony. Am I wrong?
That's what I think we would try to do, is some form of live ceremony. It would not be everybody all together in some place. But but we would, it would not just be computer screens either, so.
Okay.
In talking to the senior class president, who's talking to to some of the seniors, the idea of the parade, and I don't know how the how the town would feel about that, but just having a line of cars somehow that processes through the town and either goes out and drives through on at the football field, or we do it somewhere on Main Street or somewhere else and somehow give the diplomas that way, so there's at least some sort of processional and and some sort of some sort of live ceremony of handing over a diploma, even if it isn't a plastic bag.
Okay, okay.
So again, just to close on this, Eric and and board members, an August date, we're still gonna look at an August date for a live graduation or an in-person graduation. Is that accurate? Eric?
Well, I I wanna wanted to hear from the board before before we made that call, but that is what I think is going to work best. I also just think it's going to be incredibly difficult for us to try to do it during the school year, especially if we're in it back and forth and online and in-person and everything else.
Okay. Okay, any other comments?
I have one more question. If Eric, if you knew waiting till August, how much would that affect the amount of students that were able to attend?
We're definitely gonna miss some. I think no matter which date we picked outside of May 16, we were gonna end up losing some students. It feels to me like the longer we wait, the more students we're gonna lose as well, and some are some are gonna leave and leave for good or leave for the military. I mean, they're not getting long weekends or holiday breaks necessarily in that case, and that's that's really unfortunate. I and I don't know how to get around that, but that's another reason why I feel like the August date is going to be better, because I think every week that goes by after that, we're just gonna lose more and more kids out of the class who are able to participate.
Eric, didn't you originally have a July date? Like, for some reason, the 14th of something, like July 14, I had in my head.
There was a July 11. Yeah, that was a possibility. It feels that field felt a little too soon to me based on how things were reopening. And and also based on the conversation that I had with with the Public Health Department, because they've got a way in on all of these things too. It seemed like if we could wait till the later date, we were probably going to be better off.
Okay.
Any any other questions for Eric or myself or any other thoughts or comments from the Board of Education? So the last item then that I have under my report fairly quickly, the nurses met with myself and Bev for some planning regarding some new social distancing and health and safety recommendations from the Northeast Colorado Health Department. We are, as as a school district, we are going to be implementing these new requirements effective immediately in order to provide for the safety of of our of our staff members and and or students and family and community members regarding the the various facilities within our school system. So you can see that entering our buildings, we've got a we've got a note there, it's going to be a change, a different look for us, a beginning immediately. All locations will now have a single access point or entrance, and then a single egress point, and they'll be and they'll be different. Upon entering our location from, again, beginning immediately, we we have electronic thermometers for for the taking of individuals' temperatures. We will do temperature checks. We will, our individuals entering will have to answer a series of questions regarding whether or not they are experiencing a cough, shortness of breath, other related symptoms. I think you've seen that number of symptoms that that are associated now with COVID-19 has been updated by Centers for Disease Control. We will document all that information. We're responsible for submitting that to Northern Colorado Health Department on a daily basis. A designated person at each building, as assigned by that building administrator is responsible for the temperature checks and for the record taking. All our people in and out of our buildings will be wearing face protections. And again, these are these are in line with with updated requirements. I think I saw that Kelsey Curtis was on the meeting for tonight. Is that Kelsey, is that accurate? Are you here tonight?
I am here.
Do you want to elaborate a little bit on what I've just said, please?
No, I think you you absolutely nailed on. It was recommendations from your nursing team within the district, as well as the recommendations that's come out from the Northern Colorado Department of Health.
Okay, and that goes into effect tomorrow. We'll have signage at all of our buildings. That's going to be a little bit of a change to some of our closeout procedures, so we're gonna have to take that into account. I know we're doing we're starting to do some end of the year activities as as the as as the date, you know, is what 18, three weeks away for a closeout of this end of the 1920 regular school year. Board of Education members, do you have any questions for Kelsey and or myself on this information?
Are we gonna manage the student checkout at the end of the school year, subject to these rules?
All of our principals at our all of our individual building principals, our buildings have have built plans for collection of the Chromebooks for we're going in at the majority of our buildings now and going into student lockers and securing all their valuables within their lockers so the kids, you know, and and putting them in a in a in a bag so they can be handed off to students as they go through you know, a kind of a drive-in, drive-out model that we use with the Chromebooks. We, in the most cases, kids will not be coming into our buildings. And 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 the principals right now are building schedules as well to access their classrooms, and we will keep them away from one another as they do so. We won't we won't bring in like a single, like a sixth grade pod or group of teachers. We'll bring in a diversified unit of teachers where they have good distancing from one another. Everyone will have masks on. distancing from one another. Everyone will have masks on. And we will, you know, always be following up with cleaning and sterilizing or sanitizing the environments once people are, are.
Thank you.
You bet. Other questions from Board of Education members? Okay, that's Terry, President Lapp, that's, that's my report.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Hammack.
Yes.
Okay, now we'll move on to our Assistant Superintendent, Dr. Fresco.
Hello, everyone. The only thing I have is we're doing Lincoln's English Language Arts Adoption tonight. And so the, the list shouldn't differ so much from the high school. However, we, we are trying to gear it towards our alternative kiddos. And the only other thing is, is we're waiting on a lot of grant applications to go through CDE. So anything that we've applied for that we haven't heard from is actually waiting on CDE's recommendations. So those are the only updates I have. Questions?
All right, thank you.
Rena, or Dr., Rena, did you see there was a, a projected enrollment sheet, enrollment sheet that showed?
Oh, yeah, I did. I'm sorry. That was the one other thing. This is just a spreadsheet that I keep updated with Mike Lee and Dr. Hammack. I have for several years. And so the numbers are pretty clear-cut in elementary. And so we have talked to elementary principals about projected enrollment at different grade levels. Looking at class sizes, I guess, that you would say that are really high and really low for FTE. And the other thing about the projected enrollment is it doesn't really project for high school as far as, or, or even middle school really, as far as class sizes that are super small, like for example, maybe one class or two classes in, in elective's class at the high school is not projected in like, just looking at overall numbers. And so it's a lot easier to look at elementary schools that are like lower in enrollment for one teacher to like 15, 16, 17 students as compared to high school classes that may be in the elective's departments that are not sitting as high. So. Questions? It's, it's a little hard to read as far as that, but I think we've had really good, robust conversations with with our administrators about looking at all departments and all class sizes to look at if we have to cut budget, that we need to look, be looking at everything. So. That's all.
Just one other thing I just wanted to say, following up with, with Rena's or Dr. Fresco's presentation on enrollment is again, I think the board can see that we are a rural school system that continues to have projections where we are growing and there's supposed, and again, we're, it looks like we're down a little bit. We've been growing at about, I think about 2.25%. And I think this most recent projection has us about 1.5 somewhere in that neighborhood of growth. But again, we have more kids coming into our system once again for next year. And those are very, very early numbers. So again, one of the very, very few rural systems across the state that continues to grow each and every year. And that places, you know, real challenges on our system. Okay.
All right, thank you. Now on to our CFO, Mike Lee.
Mike, do you want to start this out? You want me to start this out?
Go ahead.
So, so I'm gonna have Mike jump in here. Board of Education members and oh, and I know there's a lot of other people that are, are on this, on this meeting tonight for, you know, particularly for this purpose.
I'm here.
What, so anyhow, what, what the Board of Education has in front of it, has in front of its members this evening is some, is some information that, that Mike has put together and that Mike and I have spent a lot of time looking at over the last several days based on what we are hearing. And I'm sure all of you are, are well aware that the state of Colorado is, is predicting pretty significant revenue, revenue shortfalls for budget, for budget year 2020, 2021, and, and even for the upcoming budget year of 2021, 2022. So Mike and I, or Mr. Lee and I have been in touch with the Colorado School Finance Project, with the Joint Budget Committee and Craig Harper, who's their chief budget guru, with the Colorado Department of Education and their Commissioner Kitty Anthus, and also with representatives from the Office of, of Governor Gerald Polis. And in all cases, again, we're being told that school systems across Colorado could, or could face very significant budgetary shortfalls. So what we, what we want to do, what Mike has done this evening is give the board a very high level overview of, of, of the scope of what those budgetary shortfalls could be. And then a, a, a look at our school district to better understand revenues and expenditures that regard most chiefly our general fund budget. So if I could, I, I want to have the, I want, I would like the board to go into Document One at this time and click on Document One. And this is a document. Is, is everybody there with me?
Yep.
Okay. So Document One is the Colorado School Finance Project. This, this is a nonpartisan group that, that monitors school funding for state of Illinois. And the finance project has built a model that is, and, and this is, by the way, this is for Fort Morgan. They've done this for all 178 districts across the state of Colorado. But they've built a, they built potential scenarios with, based on loss of, of general fund revenue from the state. And, and I'm not gonna delve real deeply into all of these, but basically it says this. If we lose five, if you can go down to the third line, Mike's blacked out the first two lines because they deal with budget stabilization factors that are, have been accrued over a number of years going back to what, 2001, 2010? But if you look at the funding, what they're showing there, if you go down to funding with an additional 5% you can see that over the additional BS, or it says additional budget, budget stabilization factor on the far right, that number in red and in parentheses is the amount of reduced funding that our district would, would absorb or would, would receive, I should say. The, excuse me, the amount that we would be cut at a, at a 5% reduction in revenue loss, that number would be 1.422 million dollars. At a 10% cut, that number goes to 2.8 million. And at 15% cut, it's at 4.2, 4.27 million. What, what Mike and I would say to the board is that the numbers we are, right now, the numbers that the Joint Budget Committee is using to determine what the Colorado Department of Education budget reduction will be for next year is anywhere from 10 to 20%. If, if, if we get 5%, we're, you know, Mike and I think that we'll be in a, in a, in a good position with, you know, with our current district budget. If we start to get up around 10% or go beyond 10%, trying to balance our budget gets very, very challenging. And I want to talk a little bit more in detail on that. Are there any questions about this first slide in the board? So then if I can have, I'm gonna skip the total A1 program slide. And then I'm gonna go to the much larger document that's, that's showing the, it's listed as Document Two, Administrator Certified and Classified Compensation Salary and Reduction Alternatives.
Dr. Hammack, if, if I could interject this real quick, if the board could click on, if the board could click on Document One A.
Please, you want to go there? Okay, go ahead.
Well, this, this from a, a quick illustration standpoint. So some of this will, will be more familiar to you. This is, this is just an extract of the revenue section of the annual budget that you approve and you work off of. And I have the, in the middle column, it's 2019 final budget. And then I've put in, in the right-hand column, the total funding for Colorado School Finance Project. So if you look at that 7 million of property tax and, and then the SO tax of 698, the total of those two is 8,303,959. That's the number that was on that prior worksheet where they were reviewing the local share for the total program funding. If you scroll down, the total equalization, equalization that we budgeted back in January was 20,000, 20 million, excuse me, 143,560. And their current estimate is 20,154,738. So CDE has made a small adjustment to our, our state funding of 11,000. So the local share of the 8,303 plus the 20,154 state equalization is the 28,458,697. That is the total program funding number that's being utilized in the, the worksheet from the Rural Finance Unit to describe what the, the reduction is. Our other revenues would come from other sources or other programs, but what the state directs to us through their state equalization calculations, local share, property tax and SO, state equalization, that's where they're getting the 28,458.
So then if I could have the board go to Docu, Document Two. And is everyone there at this time?
Yes.
Okay, okay, thank you. So Document Two again is a very large document that Mike has put together. I, I think it's important for for everyone that's on this board meeting this evening to understand that in our general fund budget we spend, or the district spends about 30 million dollars. It's actually, once, once Mike does some transfers into that budget, it's actually 32-ish, 32.5, 33 million dollars. Of that, of the, of the original 30 million dollars absent the transfers, virtually 88% of that budget is salaries and benefits for employees. And that's not, that is not unusual for school districts. You're, you know, you are, you're a system that, you're, you're, you're an entity that serves children through its people. And that's why the vast majority of our, of our budgetary expenses regards the people that the district employs. So if you're on this, on this document two, you can see that Mike has broken out, first of all, total administrative salary and benefits at the very top of the page on the far left. Average contact days for administrators is about 228 days. Total compensation for that group, about 2.6 million dollars in compensation per individual administrator, about $117,000. If you go to our certificate, our certified salary, which is our teachers, our counselors, our, all of our educational specialist personnel, contract days, 185 on average total compensation. It's a very large group. 15 and a half million dollars in average compensation per worker at about 58,000 dollars, 58,361. And then we have our, our custodial staff, our maintenance staff, cafeteria or, or food services, our paraprofessionals, et cetera, at 175 contact days on average at about 7.9 million dollars in total compensation and average per worker compensation of 33,000 and a total compensation package of just under 26 million. So then what Mike has done in the next section is to, again, with the understanding that the, that again, virtually 90% of our general fund budget regards the people that are employed by our school system. And then, and then considering what the district may or may not face when the legislature finalizes the long bill or the fiscal 2021 budget at the end of May and our district has to make decisions within the next month by the end of June. My, what Mike has done is to, first of all, give the board an idea of what projected salary reductions, and again, he hasn't included health insurance in, in, in this second piece, but what projected salary reductions would look like at 5% between those three groups, there'd be a savings of about 1.126 million, 10%. 2.23 million at 15%, 3.4 million and at 20%, 4.5 million dollars. And then in the next line down, Mike puts, again, all that information back from that number at the, at the very top, that, that 25,867. And he's showing you several different scenarios including information on, on workers to be reduced. Mike, can you specify that a little bit more in there?
Sure. And just a quick notation, if there was any kind of proposed reductions of any sort, those would go through a full process and evaluation by the stakeholders and final approval by the board. These are for purely illustration only as to the magnitude of what it might take in affecting workers and compensation and worker reduction or furlough days. These are just illustrations only. There's been no decisions made whatsoever by anybody. These are just illustrations only, there's been no decisions made whatsoever by anybody, especially including the board. This is just to kind of quantify for the, the members of our district, community members, and of course, the board to see the implications. The middle section, I do have health insurance included, because if we actually reduce workers through attrition or, or diselimination of positions, I took the total compensation and I just got a percentage. This may not be the method used to do that, it was just a, a way to calculate that. So I look at admin certified, classified, I just do a percentage of total compensation. The total number of employees in the third column under that middle section, this is, is the current workforce that we have. So if, for example, the board said we, we're going to reduce twenty workers and the twenty workers for the admin would be one point nine workers, eleven point nine for certified, and six point one for the classified, what's the dollar ramifications of reducing twenty positions out of the, out of those three different workforce groups? First column under the twenty workers column, the total has one point one two eight million. You can see we jumped to forty workers, that means three point nine seven administrators, twenty-three point eight. And I apologize for the point eight, but that was just the factor to make the calculations kind of flow through. And then twelve point two classified savings is two point two. Same scenario goes on to the sixty workers, savings of three point three, and eighty workers to get to the four point five one three. Does that kind of make sense?
Yep. And then, and then that last column there, just to show again what Mike's done, again, taking that same comp, compensation for salaries, absent health insurance. He's listed savings that would be realized based on furlough days of one, two, three, and four days in those various categories. And I, and I do want to follow up, and, and, you know, and if you looked at the, at the front page that shows, from, are from the board docs front page where you, where you first go into access these reports, I do, I do have a statement there under, under whole district expenditure analysis, expenditure analysis, and, and again, I just want to clarify, as Mike said, that there have been no decisions made. What Mike and I are trying to do this evening is just to put out a lot of information for people to see. And then we will immediately begin scheduling workshops and meetings with all state, with our stakeholders groups in order to really, you know, really do a, a deep analysis of the best decision-making that our district can make so that we're, you know, very, very much out front of whatever budgetary use that, that we get from the legislature, and we can make good decisions on behalf of the, again, of the continuous improvement of the school system. So going then to document three, again, this breaks, breaks this information down a little bit more. And again, I can go fair, I can start to go fairly quickly through some of these documents, but again, I just want to show, or Mike and I just wanted to show the board, here's a breakdown now of salaries. These are administrative salaries, all funds and departments, you can see Mike has broken that down to all the different schools, Pioneer, Combine, Green Acres, middle school, where you again, you have three administrators at the middle school, and there are a couple of different accounts. Basically, you have four administrators that make up those numbers, and they're out of, out of three different accounts. Dr. Frasco, myself, Mr. Lee, Mr. Boyer for HR, and Mr. Mr. Amack, Mr. Honkey, and Mr. Bailey. And then, and then down below that, gifted and talented, and, and again, what Mike has done at the very bottom of the page, and, and off to the right, has shown total salary, average, average salary for all those positions. He's shown the benefits percentage that accrues to those, that, that accrues with salaries, with Medicare and para, and health insurance. And then he's done some gross payroll reductions at five percent, ten percent, fifteen and twenty percent for the administrative staff. And then we repeat that, if you go to document four, that is the certificated salary information for, for our teaching, this is our teaching staff, counselors, our educational specialists, personnel, psychologists, social workers, and the like. You can see general instruction, which is our elementary, which are our elementary teachers in their general, general education classrooms at about four million dollars. And then Mike has broken down all the rest of our department areas, art, business, English Language Arts, again, that's just not confined to our high school, it's across our system. Same for mathematics, same for music, same for science, and then special education services across our system. Again, you go down to the total combined for salaries at, at just about eleven point one million. Include roughly twenty-eight percent in benefits, and then the various reductions below that at five, five through twenty percent. For document five, again, just to get an idea of scope here, here's our classified salary schedule, our paraprofessionals, secretarial staff, maintenance, custodial staff, bus drivers, et cetera. You can see the different numbers in those areas all the way down. By every single account description, total, total salaries at five point four million dollars. Their, their benefits at about thirty-two percent of the total compensation at seven point nine million, and the various reductions from five to twenty percent of gross payroll reductions. Then if I go back to, we have, so we, obviously, we employ substitutes, and you can get an idea here. Just a little idea about, Mike hasn't broken all this, this isn't all broken out, but just gives you an aggregate number at the bottom. Nineteen, nineteen through twenty till that April thirtieth day, substitute at about three hundred and one thousand dollars, and that's, that's right within that ballpark of, if you look at actuals, audited actuals for the previous two fiscal years. And, and of course, you know, we, we, we have, we, we employ a lot of substitutes for, obviously, people get it all. We have the workshops, et cetera. Classified substitute pay around a hundred and twenty-one thousand dollars, and again, you can see how those are broken out. We ended a little bit early this year, obviously, with the coronavirus challenges, and, and that number is down a, a little bit. Well, actually, fairly significantly, if you, if you look at the last two fiscal years. And then, then Mike then did a, a, a calculation on our, or, or did a, a a review of our contractual stipends. We pay stipends to our, to employees, both in district and out of district, for assuming leadership of, of various activities across our school system. And, you know, you can see team, team leadership stipends, our middle school, all their, all the activity stipends at the middle school at about sixty-one thousand dollars. You can see the high school stipends at about a hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars. And then you have a variety of instructional stipends that bring that high school number up to two hundred thousand. Total stipends at around two hundred and seventy-seven thousand, when we stopped our, when, when we, and Mike, did that, did those stipends, did we, did that stop with the COVID piece, because you've got annualized at three thirty-two?
Two seventy-seven is through April, and I've annualized that, that we'll continue to pay those through June, that'll take us to three thirty-two.
And then our, our, so we're under budget there by about sixty-three thousand dollars on our stipends, but you can see, you know, we pay plus three hundred thousand dollars in leadership of our activities programs. And is, is, Mike, is A A, is that pretty much the same document, or how is that different?
The only difference for A A is that was just for the board's refreshment of, that's actually the approved stipend list, there's both for the coaching groups, and then the instructional stipends, this is your approved stipend list for two thousand nineteen, twenty. There's, there's names on there, it's more specific, if you wanted to kind of identify where those stipends are more detailed in these two documents. The total of that combines up into document eight, which is what we're actually paying. But A A and A B are the board-approved stipends that they've already authorized.
And, and then the last two pieces, document nine, now this moves away, these last two documents move away from people. And, and they are two other very large areas within the budget or, or within the expenditure budget that certainly Mike and I would would be having the board and our stakeholder groups looking at. The first one is a, our purchased services, and just like the name says, well, first of all, there's about two point four million dollars, two point three million dollars, excuse me, in expenses within purchased services. And again, you've got some items in here that you could, you, you know, you, you could find some savings in, for example, professional educator services. At the very top there, we're spending two hundred and seventy-three thousand dollars in the budget, which is significantly up over the last few years. I know we have some, you know, assessment models and stuff in there. There's other ones, you know, that you can't touch, like treasurer collection fee, and election fee, and auditing services, we have to have an audit. So, you know, or, or, you know, water and sewer and trash, you've got to get those things in. But there are, there are pieces in here that we probably could, you know, we, we probably could, or the board could, could certainly lead decision-making on. For another one, for example, would be travel and registration within in-state, and our state, that's about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars right there, and the phone, you know, phone mileage, you're plus one hundred and fifty thousand. Undoubtedly, there, there would be savings in there for our school system. But that's an idea, that's, that's an example of purchase services, again, who had our budget at about two point three million dollars. And then our last example, or my, last example that Mike has given information on, which would be document ten would be summary of supplies, and again, we start out with total supplies. These are all of our supplies that regard instruction, about six hundred and seventy thousand dollars. And then you have, and, and so, again, potentially, there's some savings in there, I'm not quite sure what that would be. Natural gas and electricity, those get tougher. Not, there couldn't be savings in electricity, but it gets tougher. Motor vehicle fuel, there may be savings there as we talk about busing and transportation, books and periodicals and textbooks and library books, and electronic media. Again, those are all areas for potential savings. One area that's not on here, certainly that, that would make and I would, would ask the board to consider is our reserve fund, we have a reserve fund out of general, out of, out of the general fund at about six point seven million dollars. The board has to be very, very careful, and Mike and I have to be very, very careful about recommendations we make to the board in accessing that fund, because that, that fund is there in case, first of all, that fund represents a very solid fiscal accountability on, on the part of this board and previous boards, and certainly with Mike's leadership of the, of the fiscal services of the district. So it represents sound fiscal management to the taxpayers of the, of the greater Fort Morgan RE3. And, and you've got to be very careful about placing the district at a potential risk if you would expend all the dollars within that reserve fund. And, and as I said at the very start of the discussion, the projections that Mike and I are getting from C E and from the state are that it's going to be a challenging couple of years, not a single year. So in closing, before I turn it over to board comments, just like to say, this was a very, very large overview. Mike and I, or Mr. Lee and I, will work to establish stakeholder workshops and discussion times to begin putting together multiple scenarios on expenditure savings for, for the Board of Education to consider eventually to make, to lead decision-making on. Again, the legislature, as you can see, will produce a budget by the end of May, and then the district timeline will be very, very short and needing to produce a, a, a budget by the end of June for approval by the Board of Education. So having said that, questions or comments from the Board of Education to myself or to Mike?
Remind me the timeline again, we're going to get the final number into May.
Yeah, Mike, do you want to go ahead on, on, on this information?
Yeah, that would be the, the best guess. We're, we're optimistically hoping that they'll maybe get that done before the end of May, but that's their kind of internally set timeline for the school finance bill to be finished would be the end of May. And unfortunately, document one wouldn't be concluded until they get that done. And that's the, well, that's, normally, we'd say that's a sixty-four thousand dollar question, but that's really the multimillion dollar question is what are the numbers that are going to come out of the school finance bill in document one, and, and where do they end up? Is it five, is it ten, is it fifteen, or is it twenty? Or some, those are just round numbers, but some derivative thereof. That's going to be the work. And I wanted the board to be able to see spreads of compensation, the, the effect that, how that has, all the programs that, that are going to have that, how that has, all the programs that, that are going to have to be prioritized as far as, if we're focused kind of on the concept of a reading, writing and arithmetic kind of thing, what do we have to do to keep all things in place? Or what do we, what do we modify to reduce those expenditures? And through subs, do we have subs? Do we not have subs? The stipends, if we don't have athletics, especially in the fall, what money savings would we have there possibly? All the components of costs that make up our total compensation and in the salary and the supporting worksheets, those include general fund as well as our federal programs fund and our lunch fund. Because if we're looking at reductions, it's probably going to be district wide that if you're in a classroom and you're a federal funded worker and the worker next door to you is a general fund worker and the worker next door gets a pay cut and you don't. The initial thinking, that would be a difficult morale situation. So I put this together encompassing all compensation and all programs, no matter where the funding comes from. And the other piece of this that'll come out of, of the long bill is the federal cares money that's going to come to C D E, but they just have not disclosed how that's going to be utilized if, if there's restrictions with their intimating, there will be restrictions as opposed to here's some additional money, C D E Colorado. And you can reduce the shortfalls that you'll be proposing to the K-12 schools via that cares money or is it designed to do other things? We just don't have an answer for that, that discussion yet. Questions or other information you'd like me to pull together and gather up or?
I have, oh, sorry, go ahead. I was just going to ask, when we approved the longevity bonuses, didn't we put in a factor that potentially if we weren't able to meet that, that was one thing that we would not be doing?
You know, Melissa, I'm not, I'm not sure the, the potential restrictions in that approval resolution, but I think at a minimum, the, the prior budget worksheets that I've submitted to you for 2020, 21, just using flat funding, which is kind of an ironic term now, that we would get the same for 2021 as, as 1920. But I showed that calculation and that number for 2021 is about 100,000. And that would seem to me, you know, that that would be a, a point of another option for cost savings would be in that very single category.
Is it possible to get a hard copy of these documents? Can I get a set mailed to me?
I'd have to charge you postage.
Oh, good, okay.
How did you drive by?
That's right, just throw them at me, curbside.
Nancy, I can, I can help you with that.
Thank you.
Donna, never a problem, never a problem.
You know, I think one thing we need to do when we talk about, depending on the significance of the budget cuts we're going to do, is we're going to have to somehow arrange for a public meeting of some sort, whether it's virtual or somewhere that probably can have a chance to listen and ask questions, particularly if we're cutting programs or personnel.
Great.
Um, I am, I agree with Melissa about the longevity bonus. That was my understanding of that as well. But as far as the logistics on whether that got done that way or not, I don't know. My other question, I guess, is, is this, I know you're saying that this is just something to look at and very preliminary, but is this where you're thinking that we're going is salary reduction?
Well, you, Mike, do you mind if I step in here, Mike?
Go ahead.
I, I think the, again, the challenges, so first of all, I think Mike and I, Mike and I would say, we don't know precisely where we're going in the sense that, once again, 90% of the budget regards salaries and benefits. And CD and, and the state just has not clarified where they will land yet. And like, like I said at the start, what I've seen from the C D E budgetary person is he's, right now, he's building models for reductions to C D based on a 10 to 20% reduction. And, and so I, you know, I, I think when school systems such as ours look out or try to project out to what that means, you know, there's, there's a many, many different places that they have to help as a superintendent and a business official. We've, we've got to help the board and then all the stakeholders in the district look at the entire landscape of the system and see where there is potential to make reductions. For example, there may be potential for us to restructure how we deliver curriculum instruction assessment to our students on a, on a daily basis. Perhaps we have positions within our system that don't require, that, that don't require us to go out and hire another person that we could, and, and we could fill those positions with people that are already on our payroll. That's money savings to us. We would be, we would need to talk about things such as, what does our model look like for facilities and maintenance on a, on a daily basis? What is our model, our district's model look like for transportation on a daily basis? What does our model look like for, for administrative staffing on a daily basis for, you know, for, I, I, or, or for how we staff our classrooms? How many students are we willing to place in a particular classroom when we deliver instruction? Are there any departments, academic departments that we would look, that, that we would prior, you know, that we would need to prioritize when making those decisions? You know, special education is a federal requirement. We have to service kids that have disabilities. We have to service kids who have English language learner deficiencies. So really, you know, we want to think about everything with the Board of Education. So I guess my answer, Terry, to your question is, we're not considering one particular very, very far reaching, very, very creative. And I think that's why we have to bring a lot of people into the discussion and look for every way possible to save dollars and while still maintaining a high quality education
Dr. Hammack, can you give me a list of what the requested new positions that admin is requesting? How many, which ones of those have been filled and which ones are still open?
That's my next document. I've already noted.
Okay.
That's my next document.
Here, I think is a, is a follow-up to that. I, I think with, with the, the review of how impactful compensation, including the related benefits is to our total budget, it's going to be impossible to achieve any kind of a, a number in the, say, 10%, 15%, 20% reduction. There's this, it will be impossible for us to cut paper and pencil kinds of things to generate those dollars. And it could be compensation reductions. It could be furlough days. It could be reduction staff through attrition and combination of the, all of the above, some portion to minimize the effect on our overall district and education for our students and our employees. And hopefully out of an analysis, it's, it can be a shared, I guess there's no other word other than pain, it's going to be a shared pain. But I'm curious from the board's perspective, if we don't get this final number until the end of May, that's going to leave us a pretty tight timeframe to start to go through all these scenarios. Do you have any interest in starting to look at prioritization of things that are, that will be retained or would be up for discussion so we can start to model for those things? I'm just concerned about not only RE3, but the other 177 school districts with the month we're going to have to try and put that together with meeting notice requirements and getting board time to start to review these processes and looking at what possible alternatives we may have or your feelings as to your visions and strategies of how that, that may work. Do you have any interest in trying to start working on that during the month of May so we can start to get modeling? I see a Todd hand.
Well, Mike, I'm, I got one more week and then I'm in summer break, so I got plenty of time, I'll be happy to help.
Okay.
I certainly can too.
So I definitely think we need to start looking at, at things. I mean, yeah, I don't know, just putting. Boy, I mean, I, yeah.
So Mike, I guess my thought process is we do need, we need to prioritize what do we have to have versus what can we potentially cut? And I think that's where we need to work from, but I think too, we need to, you know, part of it's going to be what is the budget telling us and what help are we going to get from the federal government as well? And those are just unknowns right now. So I think the easiest thing to do is look at what, what do we have to have? And then, you know, work backwards from there.
Well, and just so I can step in here, that's, again, that's where this becomes very, very difficult. And I, I'm just going to tell people, I've done this process before and it's very hard. And, you know, the things, you know, you, you've got to deliver a core curriculum to students. You've got to have safe places for kids to go to school. A real challenge for all of us in this environment is you don't know, as we talked earlier about when Mr. Good was talking about graduation and potential pieces to graduation in the fall. You just don't know what teaching and learning will look like yet in the fall. But you, you know, you could have one, you, you could have a situation where one day you go to school, you know, and for in-person learning and the next day you don't, you know, you have a, a different group that comes in. And that could have impacts on staffing. You don't know what your athletics or activities programs are going to look like in the fall. They, you just don't know those things yet. And that's made this double, you know, double tough. But it's, but trying to prioritize your instructional program is, is, is very, very difficult, very, very difficult.
The other thing for the board's consideration is, as we move through this month of May, is that we're also in the queue for our presentation for the best grant. And we're going to have to come up with our matching dollars to, to cover that if we were possibly selected as a recipient of that best grant. And that has to be general fund dollars. There's no other revenue stream for that. So that adds additional pressure on the general fund. And then when we're cutting compensation and positions, potentially that's going to be a tough one when we have to come up with the financing structure to move for that best grant. So that's something else we're going to have to keep in the queue as we start moving forward this analysis. Anything else I can get, gather up for the board or specific things you want to see? Or does this, I focused on the program so you can see what it costs to have a particular program, that being a, a benchmark starting point when we start to prioritize. So you can pick and choose. And if a particular one is of a lower priority, for example, but maybe has higher dollar value in, in the analysis, is there some other information you'd like me to kind of put together?
Mike, if you could, you know, email the stuff out that you were showing us tonight, there was, there was so much there.
Yeah.
But I'd love to see a copy of that, if you don't mind.
Yeah.
There's a, there's a significant amount of data from the school finance project that came, that supports that document one. You want to see that too? It has all the school districts in there. I don't know what relevancy that has. We're all, we're all in the same boat, I guess, but.
No, I, I don't need that, Mike, just the stuff.
Okay.
Us.
Okay.
And thank you for doing that, I appreciate it.
You bet.
And I'm just, just going to follow, we probably need to establish, you know, we probably need to establish some work sessions to do this work. You know, we're in this COVID environment. We can't all be coming together to do this work, unfortunately. But I see a lot of my work over the next couple of months as meeting with stakeholders, by that I mean our, you know, teachers, our administrators, our, our support staff, our classified personnel with the board and, and Mike and I going through information and trying to figure out where there is savings without, without impacting the instructional program. Is that, that has to be our, our northern star on this thing is that our instructional program has to stay solid. And it's very challenging.
One last thing for the board's review, this doesn't come up right away, but it will be a 2021 issue. And that's the district's ongoing contribution to our employees' HSA and for our employees electing the no-cost surgery option and our employees who waive our district insurance, the H R A benefit. That's a mid 200s, high 200s cost for the district as well. And that's, that's, I think that's definitely a, an item that's on the discussion as to, we won't be able to possibly fund that, that health benefit in the 2021 year. And there's.
Can you pull a document like that together as well as these other ones to give to us?
Is that possible?
Well, in addition, 10 documents that we're requesting a hard copy of, or at least I am, I think Todd was too. Can you put a, a document together in reference to what you're talking about now with HSA and all that stuff so that we have that to look at as well?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
The, the other piece of this, and it's not that you want any more bad news this evening, but one consideration is that we currently have 102 employees that waive our district insurance because they have coverage through their spouses and the spouse's employment. Well, that in itself is going to be perilous for us and that's a, that's a number we just don't know because that's up, that's up to the employees to decide whether they, they waive the insurance or their, their spouse is no longer employed and has lost their coverage. So 102 peoples is over $800,000 of health insurance that just hypothetically, if. That just hypothetically, if, if all 102 said, no, I don't have coverage somewhere else anymore. I'm coming on the district insurance. We just picked up another 800,000 a cost. It would flow into our, our district health insurance. And if that were to be the case, a consideration would be right now, we pay for 100% of the employees premium for the insurance. Not uncommon, but maybe we have to move to a cost share relationship that we're just unable to finance 100% of the health premium. Don't have any idea, not proposing that, but once again, that would be one item that would show up on the menu of, of things that the board can consider. To get to a 2.9 million, 4.5, 5.2, whatever, whatever number we find to get from the state. It, it may take a complete strategy of different things to come up with that big of a number. Questions about the insurance and that process?
When does, when is your open enrollment?
Well, it's basically starting right now. I mean, we're, we're getting final documents from the health trust, from the pretty significant changes that we have made to the health plan starting effective July 1. So I would say Derek, probably something like next week or so, two weeks, middle May into May kind of process for open enrollment. And the qualifying event of loss of coverage, you know, kind of bypasses the open enrollment process, but pretty tough time for people who had in health insurance and now no longer have it or won't have it here in the very near future. So I'm definitely expecting that number to change in the number of waivers that we have, which unfortunately is the wrong direction for us in cost containment mode.
Mike and, and the board, and again, I would just remind everybody that as, as, and we don't know what the number is going to be. But it's, it is going to be at a minimum, a two-year process that we're going through. You know, negotiations are on hold right now with both of our employee, with all three of our employee groups that are on hold. We also have issued, you know, contracts to a, a number of new, you know, individuals that are currently outside our system. And I'm not seeing there would, that there would necessarily be impacts to those contracts. But you know, if there, if there, if there would be, that's, again, that's just a, another real tough challenge that none of us saw coming down the road until this COVID stuff hit. And now it's, it's reared, it's, you know, potentially is ruining its ugly head. And we're going to have to be, you know, very, very prepared, which Mike and I, and I know you folks and our whole district will be trying to do on a daily basis going forward.
Can you explain that to me? You said contracts we've been given to folks outside our district?
Well, sure. We've hired people that are not currently employed for positions for next school year. So we hired, what I'm saying Nancy is, is we've already hired people. And depending on some of the decisions that we might potentially have to make.
They may be let go.
We might have to go back and see those contracts no longer exist for people. Excuse me, I should.
No, I. I thought. I thought you couldn't just go back on a contract once you've issued it. Like, how are you going to just say, sorry, this is, we're taking our contract back?
Well, in an emergency financial situation, our policies give us the ability to go back.
Are you talking like reduction in force?
No, we wouldn't. We have the ability based on, you know, we have a number of options. And again, I'd have to come forward with all of our legal advisement on that, but I'm just saying that's something potentially we could face if we have to do reductions, if we have to move people around within our system. That's what makes this extra hard.
Okay. So then with that, we have, we're not still hiring right now, are we?
That's my concern.
There's several positions that we don't believe we need. And I've taken those off based on our discussion last week, Terry. I've taken those out of the system.
Okay, but we're still hiring, I guess, any position at this point?
We, the problem is, we know we have these openings right now and we just don't know where we're going to be. But in most cases, I've already reached out to our principals and defined several jobs that we're not going to need.
Okay. Well, I guess on that note, then we need to start, like you said, meeting. Because I guess I have a real hard time hiring really any position at this point when we're going to cut people's salary that is already working for us. That, so we need to start prioritizing, I guess, for sure, like sooner than later what we're doing.
And that's, and again, that's why we're bringing this information forward to you at this time.
Right. I guess we had already talked about that last meeting, but I guess not.
Well, but I, I did go in and put a stop. And you, you and I had talked about this. I wanted to put a stop on a number of these jobs.
Of the new requests.
But, right. And I say, I guess, yeah, I guess I thought that meant all jobs right now until we can get this figured out. That was my understanding. So that's what I'm saying. I think we need to, if we're going to continue to hire positions, we need to meet and discuss what everybody wants to do as far as prioritizing this before we're hiring positions. At all. In my, that's my opinion. That's where I'm at with it.
Terry, if we've, if we're short a, a math instructor, you know, you gotta hire the math instructor. Don't you?
Yeah, I understand that.
But not, well, and not if we can move somebody that's already in our district employed to be a math instructor. Say, do you want to reduce salary or do you want to move to this position? And I mean, that's my thought. I mean.
I don't disagree. I, I don't disagree. It's just, it's a matter of, I'm not, I'm not. You know, we haven't even had a chance to do some of this work yet. We've, we've been in this COVID environment for about a month.
Right. This is why I'm saying that we put a hold on everything until we can get something figured out.
But if we put a hiring freeze on for 30 days, what does that do to our chances of hiring people?
Well, it, I would say it, it probably is impactful. And that's what, again, what's so darn hard about this. The high school has some mathematics openings and they're in the process, you know, and for example, or, or we, or we need a special education teacher. If, if, when these sort of positions come up, they are harder than you know what to fill. And we get somebody and, and, and we just struggled with people in those areas. We have, whatever the job is, we're trying to be very, very thoughtful with moving people in right already and seeing if we can't plug some holes in some positions and/or taking positions off the queue where we're looking at class size. If you go to, you know, the next document, I've got.
Yeah, that's what I want to go to.
I've got one, two, three, four.
Six.
Six jobs right now that we've got to hold on. Now, I don't know that's where we will end up. But, you know, we've got six jobs right now. We've got to hold on right now.
And these are the same jobs you and Terry talked about earlier. There's another list of jobs out there that you've already pulled off?
No way. Why did you?
No, I thought, I kind of understood something like that when you were talking to Terry, but that, that makes sense. So these are the six that are being requested that we're just kind of holding on.
The first job is a placeholder.
Okay.
But I'll wait till we get here.
Okay.
But, but no, I, I, yeah, maybe I'm not, I'm not clarifying myself well enough, but that's what's so challenging again about this thing is, you know, I understand what Terry's saying about you. Certainly, you don't want to be reducing people's pay if you can help that. And I fully agree with what Terry's saying. What's challenging then is you have a mathematics opening and mathematics instructors are difficult to find. And you have, you know, you have candidates apply that you think are very good candidates or a special education position, for example. Those are tough jobs to fill for us.
Okay, are we finished with this part piece?
I just want to tell Mike that the only way he made me smile tonight was his background picture.
Isn't that a nice picture of Buck? Unfortunately, he was five then and he's 12 next month, so it doesn't quite look the same.
Okay, so then Dr. Hammack, are you, I'm assuming then that's where you wanted to go on to the human.
Yeah, just real quickly here. So again, we've got, thank you, thank you, Terry. So we've got, you know, we've had, we have 46 positions. You'll be able to get the first document. This is one that comes that Teresa prepares out of, out of, out of talent ed for, for our system. You can see the positions where we've had, we've had some transfer in staff. The positions that we have hired at this point. That's that first of two documents. I don't know that I have a lot to elaborate on this document. If you go to the second document, that's one where you know, we believe right now we can or we don't need to fill some of these jobs. The first position there is a place marker because it's that position's just not on the chart. So it says instructional coach. I would still, in a, in an optimal environment, like to fill an instructional coach there. We didn't have an instructional coach this year. When I've spoken with Deb Lee over at the Sherman School. I think that what this position would represent is a kindergarten job that we would most likely not need to fill. So again, we would, we're still getting one position out of this. Pioneer Elementary job at grade two. We believe there's, there's, that's a class size issue where we would not need to fill that job because we could make class sizes at 25 students, I believe it is, and still be able to provide, you know, effective instruction at that class. Green Acres Elementary, much, much in the same as, as the pioneer job of that. The, the, the special ed job, the secondary special ed job for the middle school. We just had a heck of a time getting any candidate for that position. We were not able to fill it this last year. And in speaking with Mr. Frasco, we can still make the program, we can still provide an effective program to our kids without filling that. Then we go down to page three. The dual language position, we believe we can move somebody in our system to fill that job so we can pull that off. I'm going to talk to you a little bit more about absorbing the human resources position. I know that's a, you know, that's a, I just want to talk to you about that, that, that's a full-time position. I'm going to talk to you about absorbing that into my office. There is some other, I will say this based on what Terry, the point that Terry brought up, because I think it's, it's obviously a very, very solid point. There still is some other movements that we have internally to fill some jobs. And I know Mr., I, I know I've had some conversations with some of the principals about some other internal movements that we may be able to make. And, and our, obviously our first obligation would be there. We'll try to do that.
Do we have this type of a document? I mean, it's for classified too. Do we have any? Like?
Yeah, I, I have not started that process of the classified. Certified so far. There are, you know, obviously there's a transportation department job on here. There is, I believe, still a, is there, I thought there was a brand's position on here. And I know Michael Boyer was, Michael Boyer, Michael Bailey was trying to fill that internally with some of our custodial staff members at this time. So other questions, is, does that make sense what we're trying to do right now? We're trying to address some of these, as many of these jobs. What we can pull them off so again, that we don't, that we're trying to be efficient and effective and not spend any more money than we have to. Any, any questions or comments from the board on this? Okay, Terry?
Okay, um, we'll move on to our ELO, our ELD director, Shelley Okonwu.
Kind of a bummer to follow all of that, but you have the document that Bev uploaded for me or put into a PDF for me. So you can kind of see how we did on access testing. So every year we do an access test for all of our language students that are still considered ELL. And this year we tested the 651 students and you can kind of see the breakdown of how many we tested for each building. And then the table showing the numbers of students that were redesignating or exiting from ELL. So they, when they would go into monitor status, so they have to score a four or higher overall, and then a four or higher in literacy, which is a combination of reading and writing in order to exit or redesignate ELL. And so you can kind of see the numbers there. So we've got a nice number. And as I get a little bit more time, I'll break down and look at how many we've re-designated over the past three years and see if our numbers are pretty steady. And even more than this, I really like to look at growth data to see how kiddos are doing. It's a kind of difficult because at first when they release the scores, they don't release them in anything but a PDF. So it's really hard to take them apart and really look at them. But some good news here, we've got lots of kids being redesignated. So 79 kiddos overall. Really exciting to see the two at Sherman. That doesn't happen very often, but those two kiddos just rocked out that test and did a really nice job. And so do you have any questions for me? Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Okay, that will conclude our reports and we will now move on to any, our discussion items. Uh, first up is our policies for third reading. Um, I know that these are up for vote, but wasn't there an issue on a few of them that needs some correction?
I thought we, I thought we had updated all the. Additions, is that not accurate?
Actually, um, I had called the high school because there was a couple of areas that I needed some additional information on. And, um, I spoke with Mr. Anderson and he said that we have the information. It's just gonna, um, we just. I just need to reorganize the, the policy a little bit differently because the information is there, um, but. Um. Am I hitting this right Clint, Mr. Anderson?
I, yes, everything seems to be good and all the documents are there for the graduation requirements. Uh, both with the pathways and then also, uh. The menu of options.
Okay, so that means that what we have here is complete for third reading and it will be ready for vote tonight.
Yes, I just, or I finalize it. There's a couple of areas that I just need to. Move some of the information around. So where I show there's a blank patients in the document, I just need to. It, it's just basically a clerical transaction that needs to take place.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. So is there any more discussion from anybody, um, that policy? Okay, then we'll move on to our, Dr. Hammack.
The next item is an item that I know we've talked about recently, just the, uh. I've listed it here as direct physical hours worked in service to the district and compensation. We've had, uh, closures with a couple, uh, night, you know, related to the coronavirus. In our school system since, uh, the school system was cut, closed down on the thirteenth. And then for the week of the sixteenth through the twentieth, there was a, uh. Administrative team, uh, actually from the ministry teamwork then from the sixteenth to the eighteenth. And then I made a decision at that point in March to close us, uh, fully down. We have had a need, um, for several individuals to come in and do some in-person work. Either for payroll purposes, because we had to get a payroll out. Probably most notably our, our, our food services workers that have had, that have had to. Provide meals to what fifteen hundred or provide around fifteen hundred meals. Plus on a daily basis, uh, since the time of the closure. And they'll be doing so until the end of the school year and then they'll start up again in the summer months. One of the real, uh, challenges that we face that is as a district. Is how to, how to properly compensate people. Who were, were being required to come in for in, for some in-person workers, some, some direct work. And, um. You know, and speaking with, uh, administration, with Mike Lee, with Mike Boyer at the time when he was here. I gave the go-ahead for people to be compensated for the number of hours that they were working. Beyond the regular, uh, the regular day compensation that we were paying everyone else. And so we've had. You know, cooks and fiscal services workers and I believe, and we've had some people who have. Had, you know, some of our classified staff who have had to. Exchange or, or, or be on the front lines of our building, buildings, collecting stuff from, from kids. That was, that was different than the majority of workers in our school system. And so. This is the manner that we've been paying those people. You know, you know, since this closure period. I, I, I know, like, looking back on ti- in time, I, I probably should have come forward with this model to the Board of Education at that time. And I do, you know, apologize. It, I just never even crossed my mind at the time when I made that approval. So I'm putting this out there for discussion. Moving forward, does the board want me to, to go, go on a different, a different path on this? You know, Mike and I talked about this this afternoon. I'm, you know, looking for some advisement on it. I thought I was doing the right thing in recognizing some of these people that were being required. To come in, 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 in an environment that, you know, some people, quite frankly, were nervous coming in and, and serving other people directly. But we had work that had to get done.
I'm. I, I'm just gonna say flat out, I don't agree with it and I don't really. Understand. Why some people were required to come in. Oh, that's my fault. I mean, I think there's a ton of other ways you could have maybe done a little perk for these people. Or to get them to come in and do this work, but basically double pay, um, what's the dollar amount we paid out in this?
I don't have all that information in front of me right. Mike, do you know what that dollar amount is, Mike Lee?
Yeah, I did analysis of, this would have been through, uh, the last payroll period. That would have been from March eleventh through April tenth. Paid April twenty-second and that number was about forty-six thousand dollars. In, in physical work time for employees. There's been no further cost incurred. Since April tenth. Just clarify, just to clarify, to make sure we know exactly what we're doing for this upcoming payroll. For April eleven through May tenth. That there would or would not be. The concept of paying people who are actually doing physical work, uh, beyond. The, uh, the, the no work, no, or, uh, no come in, no work payment.
So I guess I've got a question. I understand the cooks, who's actually coming in?
It was, it was fiscal services primarily. Um, for payroll purposes. It was, uh, we have to have someone there, um, to, uh, receive shipments or drop-offs to the district. And we've had the cooks coming in. I'm, 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 I'm trying to think if we've had anybody else come in. I know. I know Bev has had, um, preparatory work and I know Teresa had preparatory work that they had to be able to do. For, um, human services and for our Board of Education work. Bev, did I miss it? Did I miss anyone, Bev?
I don't believe so. Fair enough. Mike, are you aware of anyone?
Well, I think the maintenance for the last pay period would have been included in that, although they pretty much quit working. Other than like the building checks, which we normally pay for anyway.
Right.
Well, I guess I'm trying to get my head wrapped around forty-six thousand dollars. That just seems like a, a lot of money. For what we were, I, I mean, I don't know how many cooks were, and, and again, I applaud the cooks for coming in and. And they do have contact with a lot of people and I certainly, um, don't oppose some kind of stipend for that. Um, but I just, I mean, forty-six thousand dollars sounds like a whole lot of money that we spent for a month.
And I, I can go back and look at that John C, but that was kind of the, that was kind of my quick rough number, what it looked like to me, what that. Uh, what those hours, uh, district-wide turned out to be.
Our IT department has been working this whole time as well.
So I guess is it like, did, uh, that's where I'm struggling because. I, I mean, I get where you guys are saying this physical presence versus not, however. Everybody is working and working in unique situations. Or, or some are not working or some are working triple time. And I guess I just don't understand where physical presence just made it okay to extra pay. And how we didn't first think of ways to get these people to not have to make physical presence if they weren't comfortable coming in. Um, and then if there was a huge issue and it was stuff that we had to get done, then we thought of a way. To help these people out to get that stuff done, but just, yeah, forty-six thousand dollars, when I just, I just, I don't know, I'm just. That's where I'm at with it. I don't, I don't think we, that was something that we should have done and I think it's. A horrible way to start this out when we've got, I don't know, a bigger mess all around coming on. So I guess if there's no more discussion, I mean, are you asking for us to give you, I would not have a vote on it, so.
I do think though, we, we, we're going to be possibly hitting the same situation up again in the fall. We need to figure out what we're doing and, and be in the loop and know what's going on and have a plan.
Problem is with COVID, I don't know if there, is there's any way you can have a plan?
Well, I mean, what I guess I'm saying is if we're gonna be out of school again. Are we going to have the cooks come in and prepare lunches? And if so, what's that going to look like? If we're gonna have payroll, you know, what is that going to look like? We need to have something, some idea of what we're doing.
Well, the, the challenge again is going to be that we don't know yet. What the governor is going to do with in-person work. So for us to say, and, and CDE right now is calling this. Plan for multiple contingencies, which is what we're, we're trying to do right now. We're trying to think about what learning would look like if we go. One day in person and one day not in person. But right now we're trying to close our system down and. You know, our, our, we, we have to, I have to have a time to access all of our administrators. They're involved with their learning, their teachers. Every day when we start planning these things out, so. I, I don't agree Nancy, I don't disagree Nancy, that we need to be planning, but. We are trying to think about these things and we're looking as well for CDE for advisement. They're supposed to be issuing it to us. And I'm on weekly meetings with them. They haven't issued it to us as yet.
So is the question in front of us, what we're doing going forward for the pay period of April, or are we looking at what we're doing to next year?
Well, I'm, I'm looking for some advisement from the board right now. As to what, what do you want us to do over these last few weeks? We've done this model this far. Certainly I can go back and, and not pay them anymore. We've got three more weeks of our school year.
And that was my next question. How many weeks we got left?
We finish on the twenty-second.
Well, right, but isn't IT and fiscal, they're year-round, so, I mean. You're gonna pay him double for the whole some, till, till this comes off or, I mean, I just. I don't know. What if, well, what if, I thought we were closing the whole district, so it was like nobody was going to be in there. So then if somebody knew they were going to get paid double, do they get to come in and work if they want to?
No, you had to be assigned.
Well, how do you, I, I don't know, boy, I don't know.
Terry, can I give a little bit more clarification? Um, because part of this centers around the finance department rightfully or wrongfully, but. We had to do payroll and when, when the close order went out, I had no workers. I was at the district support center working every day and I had no workers. And three of my workers came in and two of them wouldn't. So the three workers that came in were, were, um. Putting caution to the wind or whatever the case may be. So they're working diligently to so we can pay our employees. And the other ones who refused to come in, there just seems to be a component of equity. And I just need to know from the board's perspective. Um, and if we say from, uh, April eleventh on, it's straight time for everybody, so be it, we'll, we'll move forward. But just for context, um, if I wouldn't have had these workers come in and the, and six hundred RE3 employees didn't get paid. Um, we may have a different discussion and that's, that's onsite work. That's not working from home. That has to be onsite to, to do the payroll. And that's, that was the, that was kind of the issue there. I mean, it's multiple examples of that cooks being one of them, but that was, that was the issue.
Would, I, just for clarity asking, would we have the same problem if, I, I know this sounds bad, but we were not paying. Classified people who weren't working, uh, for example, pairs. Were still getting paid, but they're not physically working. Would we be in the same situation? I mean, could we have? If we wouldn't have paid them and asked people to come in, would we have had to pay? More for them coming in to do their regular job? Am I making sense there?
Yeah, say that again for me Nancy.
So the finance office personnel came in because they had to do payroll and so they got compensated extra for that. Would we have had to have compensated them extra? If, for example, a classified para. Who's not coming in and not having to perform any duties is still getting paid. If we'd have pulled that pay once we shut down because they're not typically working for us, I'm not saying that's the nice thing to do. But would we be in the same situation?
It, it would have solved itself immediately and that's, that's my whole concept of snow days, no work, no pay. But we don't do that. We pay people for not working, but then if it's, if it's a day when we've got things that got to get done. You gotta show up, you gotta show up and do your job and we're paying people, we're paying people not to work.
Yeah, and I guess that's where I was coming up with a plan. If we run into the same situation in the fall, we, we need to know what we're doing. And I, and I know there's parameters out there that we aren't aware of with the governor and everything else, but. You know, are we going to maintain the status quo and move forward doing that or? Would, would something like that resolve this issue or? I don't know.
One of the problem.
Go ahead, Todd.
One of the problems becomes, you know, virus is there, the people don't want to go into work. Are you going to force somebody to go in and work in an area where there could be a coronavirus?
Right.
And the answer is no. So if your people aren't gonna go in, you don't have too many options, your option is to, these people want to come in, they want to do the work, you're gonna pay them for it.
Well, but, okay, wait a minute. How many day, okay, so first off, how many days are we talking? So did we pay them double time for the whole pay, they came in every day, they've been working since the district's been closed every day in the office, so they've been paid double for all those days?
No, that, that, that ended, Terry, at the end of April, no, it was, I think it was March, I don't have to go, but like, a minimum, it was April tenth. That was the last cutoff day for payroll.
So one whole pay period almost?
Wouldn't have been a whole pay period, but whatever, whatever that, that reduction period was.
March eighteenth through April tenth.
Yes.
So I guess, were they working on the payroll that entire time?
Payroll and or paying bills, keeping vendors current on the, the goods and services, mainly, a lot of that was food services for the food program.
Yeah, I, um, yeah.
Mike, Mike and Terry, but are, we have continued to pay our food services people, well, that was my understanding on this other schedule.
Well, what I would like the board, just, just give us guidance for April eleventh unless, unless we want to somehow go back and do a pay subtraction for what occurred in the, in the March period to April tenth. And going, going forward from April tenth, or excuse me, March eleventh, or excuse me, April eleventh through May tenth, we'll just, we'll, we'll not do that. And we'll just have to explain to the workers that that program is no longer valid.
Well, I'm not in favor of doing any pay retraction. We agreed to it, we paid it, it's, that's done. And again, I don't have an issue with some type of a stipend for the cooks because they are having physical contact. I guess I look at things like when we talk about maintenance going in and stuff like that. You know, granted, yeah, they have to go into the schools to do those checks, but we're paying them double time when they're at home, not really doing anything for a week or so, and they have to go in and spend an hour or an hour and a half. And so that's where, you know, I think we need to, like Nancy said, we really need to have a plan, especially when we just spent, you know, an hour and a half covering how we can cut budget costs because of potential shortfalls that are coming our way. So I think we need to take the hard look at that. I mean, it's not fun and it's not a good position to take, but it's something we need to do.
I would also say, John, that, you know, just, just as a reminder to the board, I know when we've talked, like when we had our most recent conversation with John Farrell, with our, our legal counsel. John, you know, John, he noted that some districts were having to compensate people at, I think it was two and a half times in some instances.
I feel like he said that, he said that sometimes to, to get them to do a certain thing, not just, they're already voluntarily coming in and they're just, they're just saying, oh, here's two and a half times because you came in. I think that was more so, well, that's not what I took from it.
Okay, yeah, and I just want to go back and say it was people that we were directing to come in. It was not just anybody coming in on their own, the food services people, the thinking behind that from me was they were out there on the front line, we had this COVID exposure and we knew we had to feed people and again, I'm not saying, you know, I'm, I'm just saying that was the thinking behind it, whether that was one hundred percent correct or not, I know it's, I know it can be debated. But I, the same thing with Mike Lee and the, and the fiscal office, we just were concerned that we had to get this payroll out. I think, you know, I, I do think, and Mike, Mike and I talked about this a little bit today, you know, we've moved out of this complete closure environment to this safer at-home environment based on the governor's recommendations, and I think it's, it's certainly a, a, a less of a sup, suppose, you know, the governor's change of, of order here is, is indicating that it's, it's considered a somewhat safer environment, and I think we, we certainly can make changes between Mike and I to reflect that. I, I'm not, so I don't know how you go back in time, I, I get, I, I will tell you, I'm a little concerned about that, but I think going forward, I think we can make changes.
And I agree, Dr. Hammack, I think we just need to look at moving forward here. I mean, what's done is done and we'll move on.
Moving forward from where? I mean, these people have been working from April tenth until today under the assumption they're getting paid A. You can't, are you gonna go back to April tenth and say now you can get paid B, or are you gonna stop it today, or are you gonna do it through the next pay period?
I would believe you would start tomorrow. But that's what I would believe. And you're not going back in time on anybody.
I don't think we can do that.
Well, okay. I'm just asking for.
Anybody, I don't agree.
Yeah, well, that's why I'm asking for your folks advisement on this.
Well, that's why I sent that lengthy memo to the board describing that very situation. And clarification that I needed to, to go forward with that.
Well, there's no way we can go back, so I say we move on from here and let's go to the next part.
Well, I, I'll take the position then that since the last payroll ended on April tenth, starting April eleventh, that procedure will be null and void and it's, it's just the standard pay for all workers, whether they're working or not. Does that make sense?
I still have a problem with that when we're paying people that aren't really working and, and aren't expecting them to work, I guess that's a fiscal responsibility too, I mean, there, there's a double edged sword. Both who aren't working. That's costly too, and I understand not paying them and so forth and the issues that cause, but again, we need a plan.
And Nancy, I agree with you, but we, we can't go back.
Oh, I don't want to go back, no.
We, we just gotta move forward from here. We have a whole lot more problems coming down the line than worrying about this, in my opinion. Are you saying change it effective tomorrow?
That's what Mike was recommending, I think.
Or back to April tenth, what are you saying?
I, I think it should go back if, if the board has not authorized that payment, I don't think we have any, any authority to make any payments without board authority, and that's kind of what I summarized in my memo, that was, that was, that was a while ago when I sent that. And so I, I'd say we go back to April eleventh and just standard pay for everybody, whether you're working or not. People aren't gonna be happy either way, so there's probably not a.
Mike, I think that we'll be happier if we go forward from tomorrow, that's my, my, my opinion.
And that would be my recommendation too, is just, I mean, they made the assumption that up to this date, they were working and that was the pay, and I think starting tomorrow, we just have to let them know that that's not the case anymore going forward from here, but not necessarily going back to April tenth.
I agree with John.
Well, the compromise is go back to the memo date I sent the board about the very issue.
No, I mean, I, I don't want to, you know, I, I, I think that I, I mean, what's done is done, and I think we just need to, you know, look at moving forward from here, so that, I guess, my position would be just, you know, starting tomorrow, this is the, the pay rates.
Well, and maybe let me clarify on that, if you're talking about the email that you sent out to the board, I didn't, I guess I didn't realize from it that you were looking for further direction from us. And I'm not sure that everybody was very clear as to what was even going on at that point.
No.
So I, I, yeah, so I guess if you were looking for us to give you feedback at that point, I, I, we didn't understand that, Mike. So sorry about that.
Well, no, I apologize if I didn't, if, that, that's, was my intent of the memo to bring the board up to speed as, as to that very issue. So there was awareness of that and, and my recommendation, we go back to April eleventh and start with the new pay period. People have jobs, they're being paid for, for their positions, whether they're working or not, and in this environment, getting a paycheck is a pretty critical, important thing, and that'd be my recommendation.
I guess I just have one last thing to say is I don't want to be like such a hard person on this, and, and firsthand, I fully understand how if you're required to go into work and you don't feel comfortable about it, how it may not work for certain people, and this does cause a lot of fear and, and anxiety and whatever, and people may not be able to come in. And that's not my point about this, I guess, I was just more so upset about how, yeah, we don't have a plan, we didn't have a plan going into this, we should have had something or some, before we made any decisions, maybe kind of put some thoughts together as to what it meant for somebody to physically be at work as opposed to not. Because that to me in itself doesn't decipher between who's working harder or not. And I guess I was hoping that maybe we could have, except for the cooks, I get that, and then the custodians that go in the buildings by themselves, but I guess thought of different alternatives for people to maybe have to come into the office like in shifts when other people weren't there and not all the time, but mostly be able to have some sort of option to work from home or something. I understand where there's parts of that that you can't do, but I mean, because I, I for one, I'm not into pushing people into coming to work or you're not gonna get paid, that's not what I'm saying here. I just, and that's the end of my thoughts on it, and that's all I've got.
Is this an item we need to vote on, or we're just, I mean, or is it just discussion, are we gonna need? What are we doing? You're asking for input on how to move, so, Mike, I guess, so is it something you want us to vote on?
Well, or just give me, I, I got, I got the guidance, I, I can, I can read through the lines on that, because I, I got payroll closed out the end of this week, so I have to move forward on, on going forward, and we'll just have to notify the employees as to what the, what the arrangement, what it is going forward, whatever, whatever day the board decides, or whatever, whatever you want to do, but I have, I've got to start getting the payroll process up for this month. And I'm just gonna need to know how to do all the time sheets and, and all the recordings of, of this, this extra work.
So, so Mike, Mike, just, just to close out here then with the board, are we going, are, are we going back to April eleventh because this, I, this is a decision that I deliver to the employees, not, you know, I, I don't put this on mic, this is my decision, this is my thing that I deliver. So if April eleventh, that what, whatever the board decides, I will do it. And I will, you know, obviously, I'm gonna do it with, with utmost respect for the Board of Education, that's, that's you folks, your folks' call. And I apologize, this came down this way. Whatever, whatever you folks tell me to do, that's what I will do. No questions asked.
Yeah, my vote is for May fifth, because we just, we stop it today and then May fifth tomorrow going forward is, is, this is what the landscape looks like.
I agree.
Agree.
I agree. And on the, the flip side of that, I think one of my bigger issues is are there people that are out there getting paid that are doing pretty much nothing, and is there anything that the, the administrators can do to get those people to be earning their pay? The teachers are, you know, doing phenomenal work. Those people that have to show up or, or doing phenomenal things. But are there people that are getting a paycheck that are really pretty much doing nothing, and is there something that they can do? Would be the only thing that I would want you to look at.
Well, yeah, Melissa, I will forward those thoughts to our principals and I will reach back out to you and the board on, on findings and, and try to do our very best on our end to to address if that issue, if, if it is there, I'm, I'm just, I just don't know to what extent it is there, I'm, I'm but let me find out and I'll get back with you, okay?
Excuse me, can I get a, from the board again, if you guys all, who was okay with May fifth, do you want to give me even a thumbs up?
Hey, thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
Okay, so we'll move on to our consent agenda. There's the Personnel Action Report. There, and that's it for tonight. So if we can get approval of the consent agenda, I move that we approve this, Nancy.
Second to third.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, is there any discussion? Roll call.
Rob Caruth.
Aye.
Derek Gurkin.
Aye.
Nancy Hopper.
Aye.
Terri La.
Aye.
John Paddy.
Aye.
Todd Schneider.
Aye.
Melissa Snitzer, aye.
Okay, we'll move on to our action items. Action item A is the policies for, for approval on third reading.
I'll move approval, both with the exception of IKF two and IKF two E, which I think we need to see in its completed form before we approve it. I'd like to table those two and approve the rest.
Which two, Rob, Rob?
The two that, the IKF two, the graduation requirements, ones that aren't completely filled in on our screen, I mean, Clinton, we've got those ready to go, but they're just not presented to us tonight.
Okay.
They're completed for.
Second, this is Derek.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, is there any discussion? Roll call.
Rob Caruth. Derek Gurkin.
Aye.
Nancy Hopper.
Aye.
Terri La.
Aye.
John Paddy.
Aye.
Todd Schneider.
Aye.
Melissa Snitzer, aye.
Okay, we'll move on to action item B, which is the donation from Cargill. It was on the agenda, it was on the meeting last time, and Jason Frasco found out that they want us to go ahead and keep the donation and apply it to the twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one score. they want us to go ahead and keep the donation and apply it to the 2020, 2021 school year.
I move to approve this, Nancy.
Todd, second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Roll call.
Rob Carruth.
Aye.
Derek Gurken.
Aye.
Nancy Hopper.
Aye.
Terry La.
Aye.
John Proudie.
Aye.
Todd Schneider. Todd Schneider.
Aye, sorry, I had it muted.
Melissa Smith's, aye.
Okay, Action Item C is the English Language Arts Curriculum Adoption for Lincoln High School.
I move to approve this, Nancy.
Rob, I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Roll call.
Rob Carruth.
Aye.
Derek Gurken.
Aye.
Nancy Hopper.
Aye.
Terry La.
Aye.
John Proudie.
Aye.
Todd Schneider.
Aye.
Melissa Smith's, aye.
Okay, Action Item D is the Board of Education Meeting Schedule, including regular meetings, special meetings, and work sessions for the 2020, 2021 school year.
I move we approve.
Second, Nancy.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Roll call.
Rob Carruth.
Aye.
Derek Gurken.
Aye.
Nancy Hopper.
Aye.
Terry La.
Aye.
John Proudie.
Aye.
Todd Schneider.
Aye.
Melissa Smith's, aye.
Okay, Action Item E is the District Accountability Committee Meeting Dates for the 2020, 2021 school year.
This, John, all motion to approve.
Nancy, second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Roll call.
Rob Carruth.
Aye.
Derek Gurken.
Aye.
Nancy Hopper.
Aye.
Terry La.
Aye.
John Proudie.
Aye.
Todd Schneider.
Aye.
Melissa Smith's, aye.
Okay, um, Action Item F is Shift Responsibilities for Human Resources Administration to the Office of the Superintendent. I don't know that we really
I'd like to table this, if we could.
Yeah, I, I guess I should have paid closer attention. We probably should have had some sort of discussion on this before we voted, so I agree.
Just, just Terry, just, just so the board understands this, Mike Lee has to make a decision on what we're going to do with the human resources position. I can go out and interview, and it's up to the board. I'm, what I'm trying to do is save the board plus $100,000, but it's, it's totally the board's call, but Mike has, you know, we've got some movement in our internal office, we've got, oh, I'm, I'm losing people's names here. Bev, Mike, Boyer's secretary, I'm losing people's names.
Teresa Kramer.
Teresa Kramer, who has interviewed with Mike about accepting a payroll position. And then we have, just for the board's edification, the Office of the Human Resource Director and Secretary last year, that cost to the district was plus $210,000. Okay? If the board wants me to go out and interview candidates for the human resources job, I can do that, that's no problem at all. I've got eight candidates that have applied, and I'm, and I'm guessing you're gonna, you're going to have to hire someone in that $80,000 to $90,000 range plus benefits, and then you're gonna have to have, you're gonna have to have a secretary over there. The only reason, you know, that I, but, 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 but Mike has to know, because we have Diana Legler positioned right now to take on the fiscal piece for the health insurance. And I was reaching out to the board with the understanding that Bev Morford and I, which we're already doing right now, would absorb the human resources job and save the district over $100,000 that we could apply to deficit reduction. But if the board doesn't think that's the right move, that's fine, I'll start the interview process immediately, notify candidates. But again, at the end of the day, you won't save $100,000 anymore, you'll all about even. I'm just trying to find ways that the district can move forward and be fiscal and, and, and save money, because we're gonna be facing a lot, you know, a, a steep, potentially a steep, a steep reduction in revenues.
I think, well, we, I will understand the, the reasoning behind what you're saying, I believe, it's just that we weren't aware that we needed to decide tonight, I believe is the issue.
That's right.
Yeah, I mean, that, that's, you know, that's, that's, Melissa, that's, that's the issue, it's shifting, in my mind, it's shifting a full-time job on virtually, you know, virtually all the responsibilities of that job come on to myself and the, and Bev, and, and certainly, and Bev and I have talked a lot about this, willing to take those on, but there would have to be some negotiations on, on an additional stipend, it would be almost another eight to 10 hours a week for both of us, because, and, and we would have to do some sort of it's, some sort of efficiency model to get that done. I, I know we can make it, I know we can do it. But it's, it's a, it's a big workload on top of, you know, what we do already, but, again, it keeps the, it keeps the district out of having to pay for, you know, a, a human resources director at, well, once you pay salary and benefits, well over $100,000 bucks.
Board, if I could clarify, the, the payroll process is, I have an employee who's retiring, and I, I had posted that position, and I had no qualified candidates even apply, and then kind of at the last minute, I was, I was getting ready to move to a contracted relationship with some other pay vendors, like a Paychex, ADP, something along those lines, I had a, a, not a late applicant, but HR assistant expressed an interest in making that transition to payroll, but it will, it will make a difference if we're gonna retain that, that department as it stands now, then she'll probably more than likely stay there, and with my retiring employee, I'll, I'll need to probably go out to the marketplace and see what that looks like for an ADP, Paychex, Experity, something like that, to farm out the district's payroll. I just have no, I have no candidates who even have any payroll experience whatsoever, who even applied for that position. So just an awareness of, and I don't know what that's possibly gonna cost to get that farmed out to do that, but that's, that's how I'll move forward then with that process, if that's okay with the board.
I would move to approve Action Item F.
This is Rob, I'll second that.
So I guess, to be clear, are we doing this shifting for a long-term basis, a short-term basis, because there's no real clarity on that to me.
Well, I, if I could say this as well to the board, John, I have eight candidates right now for the human resources position. I think there, there are two people that have human resources experience, the other six do not. And, you know, until I, you know, and, and, and until I start interviewing, would start interviewing people, I got one gentleman that's an out-of-state applicant. I just don't know. I, I just wouldn't know fully what, what the candidate pool was until I really started interviewing people. The nice thing about Bev and I is Bev did the human resources work at a prior time, and I've done that work as well in the other two systems in which I was a superintendent. So I, you know, we understand it, and then you're, you're asking, is it for, is it for a long-term, that would, yeah, my, my feeling would be, it is for the long term, because we are going to be facing revenue shortfalls, and I think, and, and again, Mike and I have talked about this, the administrative office is going to have to take on some, some budgetary reductions, and I think this is one way that we can get that done. And again, it's a lot, it's, 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 it's a big job, as I said before, there needs to be a stipend built into it, a that I can talk with the board about for, you know, for myself and for Bev, because it's a lot of work and a lot of hours, in addition to what we already do, and I know the board has very high expectations always for, you know, all of our work on behalf of kids, and I want to do a good job for the board.
Right, and I think that's, you know, and, and I appreciate what you're saying, Dr. Hammack, and I think that's my concern, is that you guys are taking, going to be taking on so much, that if it is the long term, it's gonna lead to burnout. Number one, and number, my second concern is that being both the superintendent and the director of HR, to me, sets up potential conflicts of interest there as well, or you know, some friction that, that could potentially occur that we would then have to maybe go outside of the district, looking at some type of mediation because of that, and I guess my thought process is too, is that, that HR person is a critical position for the district, and I appreciate your thoughts on wanting to save money in that regards right now, I just don't know that that's a position that we need to sacrifice to do that. And I think that it's something that's, that's a critical, I mean, I guess my thoughts would be something in the short term, and maybe get some people interviewed and see what the applicant pool looks like. And I guess I would just put that out there to, to the board.
Well, I, 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 you know, I, I guess I'm, I'm sounding a little selfish here, I don't mean to sound this way. You know, Bev and I are doing this work, and, and John, here's my feeling. At the end of the day, we're going to be facing, you know, who, who knows what this number comes out to, but let's see, it comes out to something in that $3 million or plus range. That means you have to find, you know, many, many $100,000, you know? Did I lose somebody? You have to find multiple $100,000 savings, and I know administration is going to have to set an example on that, we're just going to have to. I can't expect our other employee groups, and I, and I will tell you right now, I don't want any other employee in the system to have to absorb another position, that's, that's a lot of work. I've done it, and Bev's done it, and that's the only reason I think we could be successful at it, or, but but
Well, and I guess too, Dr. Hammack, I know that you know, Mike Boyer was putting in, you know, a good 68 hour, 80 hours a week during the HR job prior to his leaving, and I just don't know how it's feasible for you and for Bev to absorb, you know, 60 to 80 hours a week with the duties that you already have. I think that that, in the short term, we could make that work, I just don't see it in the long term.
A week, nobody could. But I think there are ways to streamline, you know, I was in another position as a superintendent, or I was the superintendent, and I was the business official. And I, you know, I was able to absorb both those jobs, and I'm gonna have to find a way to get both those things done. So that's my, that's my, you know, my feeling, I wouldn't, I wouldn't put it out there if I didn't think it was doable.
Let me just ask if my understanding was correctly, Mike Lee, when you said if we leave Bev and Dr. Hammack as doing the HR position, did that mean that Teresa is not going to move? Or she doesn't get the option to move?
No, if, if they took over the, the HR department, I think she would, she would wanna move over to payroll, and that doesn't mean, there may be a, a need for some kind of a clerical person in HR to, as John was talking about, just the hours to keep up on some of the, just the background administrative support work to, just to keep the wheels of HR moving forward, but I, I think she has an interest in coming over to payroll, but I don't, I don't want to speak for her, but just from my understanding. Did, did I answer that, Terry? No. You, you don't have to be shy, so what kind of answer was that?
I'm just, yeah, I'm just, I'm concerned that her not being there, and then all of this being absorbed by Bev and Dr. Hammack is a lot. I think it's a lot, I don't I understand the saving money, but I just, I don't know.
I agree, Terry, and I think there's, I think there's other ways that we can look at this, but I just don't think this is the move we want to make. I'm not in support of that.
On the other hand, I don't think we want to farm out payroll to party administrators either, that's, that's less tasteful to me than you know, I, I don't mind, and I think John, to your concern, I, I think we can certainly evaluate after a year and see where it's at. I think to get to the, to get to this budget, if this budget cuts are as significant as they seem they're going to be, we're gonna have to make some deep cuts in administration, because you can't cut instructional, and you can't cut and not cut administrative positions, you can't do it, it's not fair.
I, I agree, Rob, that if you're gonna, if it's gonna be as deep as we think it's gonna be, or we, deep as we anticipate it, you're gonna have to make cuts all over the place.
Well, I know
Not just administration, and, but I think that when we start looking at all of the stuff that a HR person does, and I understand some of that stuff, is that it is a ton of work. And if we are just doing it half, I mean, I'm not saying that Dr. Hammack's gonna do it halfway, but I'm saying if we're not doing 110% in this, in, in the HR position, then especially, I guess 110% in this, in, in the HR position, then especially, I guess my other thought is, is that, you know, we don't, you know, we've got applicants out there. I don't see where the issue is in interviewing, and if we've got somebody that's gonna be, you know, that can take the position and really move forward with the district, I think that that is, to me, in the short term, yes, we've gotta cover it, but in the long term, I think a year's too long.
I, I agree.
I'm, I'm gonna call previous question. Somebody wanna second that?
I'm sorry, what'd you say, Derek?
I call for previous question. Now, that requires a second and a vote. If it passes.
Yeah, I'll just, I'll just put it out there again, that I, I fully believe that I'm capable.
Okay.
Did you get a second, or was there no interest in?
I'll second the, I'll second your call for a question.
Okay.
Can you clarify what is previous question?
If you, if we vote yes to this, then discussion ends and we vote on the motion. So we're voting to end discussion.
Do we have a, a second?
We do.
Okay.
So we immediately go to vote.
Okay. So that's, so we had a motion and a second on the
Calling the discussion.
Oh, so, so I have to, we have to vote on that first.
Correct.
Okay, sorry. Okay, so we had a motion and a second on previous question. Roll call.
Rob Caruth. Derek Gurken.
Aye.
Nancy Hopper.
Nay.
Terry La.
Aye.
John Proudie. John Proudie.
No.
Todd Schneider.
Yes.
Melissa Smith's eye. The vote is five to in favor, calling the discussion.
Okay, so we're ending discussion, so we'll now move to vote on action item F.
It has been seconded.
Okay, so we had the motion and a second. We're done with discussion, so roll call.
Rob Caruth.
Aye.
Derek Gurken.
Aye.
Nancy Hopper.
No.
Terry La. Terry, did I get a?
Terry's on mute.
Sorry.
Terry La.
I'm gonna abstain.
John Proudie.
No.
Todd Schneider.
Yes.
Melissa Smith's eye. We have four ayes, we have two nays, and an abstention.
What I wonder is, I don't think it can abstain from a vote, but we can discuss that another time.
Can we clarify what passed?
They both passed. Calling previous.
Sorry, go ahead, Melissa.
On previous question, I have that it passed.
That was to end the discussion, correct?
Correct. That passed five to two. And the action item F had four aye votes, two nay votes, and one abstention.
Kerry's.
Do you disagree, Bev?
No, I just wanted to clarify so that we made sure that everyone understood. That's all. Yeah.
Okay, so are we moving on to information items? There's the pictures of the three new buses. And we're just, there's just a little section here on the Baker students that make masks to protect their frontline lunch staff. Just a little, thank you and honorary of that.
That was great.
Yes. Our advanced planning and this week is Teacher Appreciation Week. And Teacher Appreciation Day is tomorrow, Tuesday, May 5. Our last day of online learning is May 15. Our next regular meeting is May 18. The week of May 18 through the 22nd will be where we do our property exchange. Basically getting the last day of the school year is May 22. All the graduations are still to be determined. We have an upcoming regular meeting June 1st and June 30. So with that, we will be moving into executive session for personnel matters, except if an employee who is the subject of an executive session requests an open meeting. If the personnel matter involves more than one employee, all of them employees must request an open meeting. Discussion of personnel policies that do not require discussion of matters specific to particular employees are not considered personnel matters, according to CRS 24-6-402 subsection 4 subsection F. And it's just gonna be the Board of Education in the executive session.
Terry, may I ask a quick question? Special meeting June 30th, that's a Tuesday? Is that correct?
I believe, so that one's at 7:00 AM, and that.
But it's a Tuesday. I just want to clarify that it's not Monday. It's always the last day of June. Okay, thank you. Thank you.
What's a pleasure of the board.
I move we approve going to executive session as stated.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Roll call.
Rob Caruth.
Aye.
Derek Gurken.
Aye.
Nancy Hopper.
Aye.
Terry La.
Aye.
John Proudie.
Aye.
Todd Schneider.
Aye.
Melissa Smith's eye.
Okay, then we will adjourn our regular meeting at 10:11 PM. And we'll see the board in the next meeting.
So we're gonna come back in, all right?
Yes, thanks.
Good evening, everybody. Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Thank you.